Yeah.
Yeah.
I love upstairs. So, just bear with me. Okay, would you like to call meeting to order and the explanation of the disaster? That we would, if there would be a fire or a disaster, we would follow the exit signs outside and the tornado would be following signs to basement. So, we would go out this exit over here. So, the meetings are being videotaped tonight. And before we make everyone speak directly into their microphone.
I need one more.
Okay, can I get the camera now? Okay. Never mind, I left it at my office. Okay, let's have a roll call of all.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Whitaker.
Here.
Alderman Duco.
Here.
Alderman Eris.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Denelman.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wagon.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here. Alderman Ferguson. Yes. And Jenny is speaking. So, we could meet how department did roll call.
City Treasurer Beerman.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre. Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith. Director of Library. Randy, I'm sorry.
Did you say yes, Randy? Okay, thank you.
Director of Library Leander Beerman.
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich.
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Human Resources Seth Miller.
Here.
So, I just have Finance Director Jamie Maitre. Excuse me.
Okay. So, let's all stand for the first question. I.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands? One nation under God and universal liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearing tonight but public participation. We will take now. I hope you had the opportunity to sign up for public participation. And I want to remind you that when you come forward to speak into the microphone, please state your name for the record. And also, you have two to three minutes per person. So, is there anyone who would like to speak tonight in public participation? Yes. Thank you.
Hello? Who's it, yeah? Who's Michael? I don't know. Yeah, okay. I can talk a little more clearly that way. All right, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kristen Broyles and I am the Vice President of Metro East Pride. Those in attendance with me tonight are fellow board members of the Board of Directors. We come here tonight not to cause a disruption or to question the decision made by the officials to remove the pride flags from the public square, but rather to express our sincere thanks to the City of Belleville for their support of the LGBTQIA+ community. Pride gatherings are rooted in the arduous history of minority groups who have struggled for decades to overcome prejudice and be accepted for who they are. LGBTQIA+ Pride Month is celebrated every year in June. The month of June was chosen to commemorate the rebellion held by members of the LGBTQIA+ community against the police raid that took place in Stonewall Inn located in New York City on June 28th, 1969. According to the Library of Congress, the Stonewall uprising was a tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States. We stand here today in the footprints that were laid before us by those fearless fighters of the LGBTQIA+ movement and we continue to fight for those that will carry on our efforts long after we are gone in the hopes for a better and more inclusive society. Excuse me. We will agree to disagree on the decision to remove the flags from the public square. We view the decision to relocate them to Highway 159 as a compromise towards a step in the direction of equality. Metro East Pride traditionally holds our annual Pride Fest in June, but upon consultation with the City of Belleville and St. Clair County Health Department, Pride Fest, sorry, it was postponed to October due to COVID-19 restrictions. Pride Fest is a family-friendly festival with vendors, food, entertainment, educational booths, a kid zone, and teen pride, which offers activities for everyone in the LGBTQIA+ youth. Our motto is diversity, equality, and inclusion. We invite everyone to Pride Fest, which will be held on Saturday, October 2nd, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Metro East Pride is not just about throwing a party or about community, a community in which all members are respected, appreciated, and welcome. During the past year and a half, due to the pandemic, our fundraising efforts have been halted, yet we were still able to give back to the community in powerful ways, including a pride scholarship, Kings for Kids Toy Drive, Holiday Food Box Giveaways, Belleville Chamber Movies with Santa, Belleville Chambers Backpack to School Fun Fair, the PEG Can Help Golf Tournament Whole Sponsor, Pride STL and Black Pride Christmas Dinner Sponsor, and a Foster Care LGBTQIA+ Christmas Party. As most of you are aware, there have been many positive posts on social media about the pride flags and many comments commending the City of Belleville for recognizing Pride Month. We understand that not all residents support our organization or our mission and that is their right. However, Metro East Pride is extremely proud of the work we do and our contributions to the community. We look forward to working with the City of Belleville to bring LGBTQIA+ issues to the forefront. We truly appreciate your support. I'd like to conclude with a statement that sums up the reason for our existence as a board. Gay pride was born of a need to celebrate being gay, or not of a need not to celebrate being gay, but our right to exist without persecution. So, instead of wondering whether there isn't straight pride movement, just be thankful you don't need one. Thank you for your time.
Well, I want to thank you for all being here tonight. And I want to thank you also for all the volunteering that you are doing in our community and you are a big part of this community. We have a very diverse community and that is something that we should celebrate. And I so appreciate you coming and I also appreciate, and I've been to the Pride Fest before, right after Public Square, a couple weeks after that, and I certainly appreciate everybody from your organization and also volunteers there and all the good things you are doing. And I think this brings a lot of awareness to the forefront that we need in our community, not just for LGBTQ, but everyone. So, I thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more public participation? Yes, Mr. Becker?
Yes, I'm Michael Hagbrun. First this evening, I'd like to speak about the spelling of Centerville Avenue's street signs. Although historic spelling has been C-E-N-T-R-E-V-I-L-L-E Avenue, some of the more recent signs have been spelled as C-E-N-T-E-R-V-I-L-L-E. I would like to see the signs use the historic RE spelling. I've had email conversations with Michael Veloff and he indicated the new signs will have the ER spelling to match IDOT signs on Route 15. Our ordinance book contains over two dozen references to the historic spelling. Would that have to be modified? And what will this council do about the signs in the unincorporated portions of Centerville Avenue? Are you aware of the process to change a street name with a 911 service? Which, by the way, is persnickety about street names when dispatching fire and ambulance services. Bottom line, IDOT made an error on their signs and this alone is not reason enough for us to justify erasing our history. Mayor Gregory, if IDOT sent you a letter and misspelled your name, would you go down to the DMV and get a new license? Would you inform your lifelong friends and family members that you have a new name because IDOT made an error? I plead with you to not allow the city engineer to erase the historical spelling of Centerville Avenue. Next item, engineering contracts. With a new administration in office, I would hope that this city takes the opportunity to modify the process for awarding contracts to engineering firms. In the past, seeking input from multiple engineering firms has saved a million dollars on a single project, specifically the stormwater sewer, or stormwater, stormwater storage tank on the east end. Council often approves engineering contracts based on a percentage of the construction bid. This ensures that any firm selected will be paid a fixed price depending on the size of the project. What I've discovered recently is the council approved a contract for 10.85% of the construction bid. Mayor Eckert signed the contract where 10.5% was crossed out and replaced with C-attached fee schedule. In my opinion, this is not only wrong, but diserves the taxpayers. Actions such as this have led to some engineering fees being over 20% of the construction bid. Another contract quoted over 300 man-hours of engineering design work, not to exceed $56,000, for an asphalt overlay a mere 1,200 feet in length. Mayor Gregory, please sign only unmodified contracts that have been approved by council. If there are any modifications, send the contract back to committee for reapproval. Now, let me address the contractor in inspection on Centerville Avenue project. Last Tuesday morning, the contractor had a dump truck with topsoil to be spread, seeded, and covered with hay. While they were using a backhoe to get the topsoil from the truck, they raised the bed and drove down the street. In doing so, they ripped the wires from my internet and phone service off the utility pole. I asked to speak with the inspector, signed to the job, and was informed he was not on site. The earliest repair I could schedule a charter was late Thursday afternoon. I figured the city engineer would have a personal contact at the utility company to expedite the order, so I called Mr. Veloff. Mr. Veloff informed me that having no inspector on the site was an ongoing issue during this project. He also stated he could do no more to expedite the order with charter than I could by calling for the repair. I work from home and require telephone and internet access to perform my job. At this point, all I could do is lose three days' worth of work. Charter showed up Thursday evening and repaired the wires. You would hope this is the end, but no. Like a bad infomercial, wait, there's more. Early Friday morning, I again lost internet and phone service. I ventured out to the street and saw the contractor striping the center lane and noticed the internet and phone wires that once again had been ripped from the utility pole. The contractor said they didn't rip down the wires, although right below where the wires used to be located, you could see clear evidence of the truck stopping and restarting the stripe. I asked to speak with the inspector and as before was informed, he was not on the site. I then called the mayor's office and left a harsh voicemail. I apologized for the harsh tone as I was quite irate at that moment. It was all deja vu, it was deja vu all over again as I had to call charter and schedule a repair. I explained to the agent that I went through three days of no service and she was kind enough to expedite the order for that day. All I can say is I was glad the contractor wasn't working through the weekend so I can enjoy a couple days of uninterrupted internet and phone service. I thought this council approved an inspection contract where IDOT required an inspector to be on the job site at all times construction was being performed. I personally know of twice where the inspector wasn't on site. How many hours of construction were completed with no proper inspection? Will the taxpayers be on the hook for substandard work or materials that weren't inspected? I have more, but I'll save it for committee meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. I would like to tell everyone that our Mike Veloff, our engineer, resigned last Wednesday and I have been actually looking for an assistant for him for over two weeks. And so, we are hopeful to get at least a part-time new engineer, maybe two even, but we also have already put in out for hire the day after Mr. Veloff had resigned. We also have out for hire our economic developer. So, that is where we are standing right now. And I thank you, Mr. Becker, for bringing your service forward. Thank you so much. Any more? Oh, Stuart. Would you like to come up and speak, please?
Man, I thought he died in jail.
If you're joining us by phone, can you please mute your phones?
Stuart Lanard, 318 South 29th Street. This all leads into Belleville, so don't. President Trump and his, President Trump and his family have been getting death threats even by Democrat congressmen and senators for over four years. And I make a, and I make a might, I get, hear that might, not, I might blow up two-bit newspaper and they all go nuts. I am tossed in jail three days, 15 people in a small cell, no mask, $7,500 bond, case still pending, $25,000 law fees so far, lawyer fees so far. On November 7th, some morons had a so-called photo shoot by having ten or so people blocking East Washington Street. I come, I never come close to hitting anyone, but seven weeks later, I was charged with aggravated assault, two felonies, $4,500 bond. I had been branded a racist in Belleville by the news Democrat with three front-page stories about me. The Democrats keep saying America is a racist country. I don't think so. I've decided that to atone for my so-called racism, I say so-called, I am going to put up $50,000 to help fund a statue of a black school teacher who was lynched in 1903 on Public Square and body burned while the mayor and police did nothing to prevent it. I have nothing but disdain for Democrats and news media from dying down to local Dems in Belleville. My lawyer says they hate me in Belleville, so I'm not running a popularity contest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Any more public participation?
May I speak from here? May I speak from here? Okay, thank you. In the past, Mayor Eckert decided which street projects were to be done next. These projects were presented to Street and Grades to award engineering contracts without any input from the Street and Grades Committee. In the future, I would like to see Street and Grades discuss outstanding projects and what should be done next. Street and Grades should review and discuss the quality-based selection during an open meeting. I would like to see a policy in place to have QBS on jobs, the city bids. All we need to do is follow the state law. Federal law does not require it, but the state does. I noticed this is on Ordinance and Legal Review Committee for tomorrow evening. At the meeting on May 17th, 2021, the council voted to approve construction inspection on Forest Avenue. This job has been bid and as far as I know, IDOT has not yet approved it. This week, I took some time to go over the numbers and it looks like we are to pay $115.96 an hour for a construction inspector. Now, the way you can get to this, and it's in your packet of May 17th, is take the total number, the total consulting fee, which is $39,427, and divide it by the total number Way too high. So, let me go on and just finish this up. The contract did not specify classifications for a construction engineer, so basically, a staff engineer was paid $28.46 an hour, the senior staff engineer was paid $56.41. I would like to see a general rule implemented where an inspector is not employed by the engineering firm or a low bidder. This way, errors in design or construction are reviewed by an independent third party. We owe it to the taxpayers to oversee their money and if there are problems, the engineering firm or low bidder will be forced to use their errors and omissions instead of the taxpayers paying for their mistakes. Let's stop rushing and hiring inspectors before a job is bid or approved by IDOT. I ask that Mayor Gregory be afforded the opportunity to staff the engineering department with an engineer and inspector. A few years ago, the city paid a firm to do an asset management to inventory every road, sidewalk, street sign, lamppost, manhole owned by the city. I request a copy to be mailed to each alderman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more public participation? Hearing none. by the rules, being open-minded, and not taking advantage. And in this time, I would like to invite Chief Clay to come up and where we will be recognizing police officers that have given 20-plus years of service to the City of Belleville Police Department. So, I'm going to let Chief come here and I'll move you down a bit. Good. Master Sergeant. Ready and set.
Hold on, Ben, dark shit again.
This is presented to you.
Please mute your phones, we can hear you talking.
Sorry, Patty.
First of all, you may take the oath. Presented to Craig Young Staffer in recognition of sincere appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the citizens of Belleville and the Belleville Police Department. Congratulations on your retirement. 1988, 2021, and you had some other time.
Auxiliary from 1988, 1984.
So, there you go.
Congratulations. And I personally wanted to thank you for being here because 20 years you've been with us in Public Square. And you've been there morning, noon, and night, and I believe you were the last one I saw. And I love every night. And we so appreciate all the work that you have done, not only for Belleville, but also for our community, volunteering in so many ways, and also for everything you've done for Public Square. We so appreciate it. If you would have come back this year, it's October. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Way to go, Craig.
And this is your life mission and sincere appreciation for your years of service to the citizens of Belleville. Congratulations on your retirement. Came on 2001.
As my sergeant and my lieutenant and my chief, yeah, we usually see each other. Just say that.
From 2001 to 2021.
And I want to thank Craig for leading his family right from home. So, we are good neighbors. And I so appreciate all, everything you've done for the City of Belleville and good luck in your future retirement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But he's not retired. He is? I thought he was just getting a hold.
She took my agenda. Oh, thank you.
We really need some good police.
Thank you so much. And now, I need a motion for the appointment of Tim Brigwitz to serve a three-year term on the planning commission.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I call for discussion. All those in favor? Oh, roll call, I forgot. I was doing the. Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Denelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I would like to motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021. A second. Roll call? Oh, discussion, I forgot. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Denelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I would like to motion to approve the treasurer's report April 20th, 21, and approve the statement of cash and investments report from April 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll have the roll call. Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Denelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I would like to motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021. A second.
Second.
Roll call? Oh, discussion, I forgot. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Denelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,466,022.94 Do I have a motion for the approval?
Second.
And we have the second. Could we have discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Denelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,466,022.94 payroll in the amount of $869,758.95 and $8,851,910.11. Do I have a motion for the approval?
Second.
And we have the second. Could we have discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Denelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, on the reports, we'll read as one motion.
Request a copy to be mailed to each alderman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more public participation? Hearing none, we will recognize the character award of the month, which is parents, being playing by the rules, being open-minded, and not taking advantage. And in this time, I would like to invite Chief Clay to come up. And where we will be recognizing, uh, police officers that have given twenty-plus years of service to the city of Belleville Police Department. So, I'm going to let Chief come here, and I'll meet you down there. Good. Master Sergeant.
Hold on, Ben, dark shit again.
This is presented to you.
Please mute your phones. We can hear you talking.
Sorry, Patty.
Presented to Craig Young Stafford in recognition of sincere appreciation for your years of dedicated service to the citizens of Belleville and the Belleville Police Department. Congratulations on your retirement. Nineteen eighty-eight, twenty-one, and you had some other time.
Auxiliary from nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-four.
So, there you go.
Congratulations. And I personally wanted to thank you for that, because twenty years you've been with us in Belleville Square. And you've been there morning, noon, and night, and I believe you were the last one I saw. And I love every night. And, uh, we so appreciate all the work that you have done, not only for Belleville, but also for our community volunteering in so many ways, and also for everything you've done for Old Town Square. We so appreciate it. If you want to come back this year, it's October. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Way to go, Craig.
There he is. Officer, you're glad I'm here. This is Spike, you're welcome.
Yeah. It ain't fixed. It ain't fixed yet?
Okay.
I just talked to her.
Craig. Chief. And this is a recognition and sincere appreciation. For your years of dedicated service to the citizens of Belleville Police Department. Congratulations on your retirement. Came on two thousand one.
As my sergeant and my lieutenant and my chief, yeah, we don't usually see each other. Just say that.
From two thousand one to twenty twenty-one.
And I want to thank Craig for doing his family right. So, we are good neighbors. And I so appreciate all, everything you've done for the city of Belleville, and good luck in your future retirement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
But he's not retired.
He is. I thought he was just getting a hold.
Oh, he took my agenda. Can you... Oh, thank you, Chief. Thank you so much. And now, I need a motion for the appointment of Tim Brigwitz to serve a three-year term on the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, I call for discussion. All those in favor... Oh, roll call. I forgot. I was doing the... Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Now, I would like an motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. A second. Roll call? Oh, discussion, I forgot. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, we need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of one million four hundred and sixty-six thousand twenty-two dollars and ninety-four cents payroll, in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents, and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents. Do I have a motion for the approval?
Second.
And we have the second. Could we have discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, on the reports, we'll read as one motion. Motion to approve the Treasurer's Report, April twentieth, twenty-one, uh, and approve the Statement of Cash and Investments Report from April twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. We'll have the roll call. Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials towards that.
Mayor, if there's no problem, can they read the zoning and communications as a group if the council would be okay with that?
You okay for me reading zoning as a group?
Yes.
Okay. Jenny?
Thirty-one, May twenty-one, Ricardo Tucker, Tucker Quality Homes LLC, request for a use variance to establish a two-family dwelling at six High Point Drive, zero-two-three-six-zero-four-zero-eight-zero-zero-four, located in an A-one single-family residence district. Applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-five-seven-zero, Ward Four, zoning board unanimously voted to recommend approval. Thirty-two, May twenty-one, Jerry and Debbie Belleville, request for an area bulk variance to erect an eight-foot fence at four-twenty-one John Henry Street, zero-eight-three-three-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-nine, located in an A-one single-family residence district. Applicable section of the zoning code one-six-two-point-five-seven-zero and one-six-two-point-three-nine-two, Ward Five. Zoning board unanimously voted to recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call. Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. A motion from the Planning Commission. Alderman, do you make the motion?
I will. Motion from the Planning Commission to, uh, for McCullough Flooring, site plan and architectural elevations for the addition of approximately forty-seven twenty-five square foot commercial space at forty-four hundred North Belt West, a C-two heavy commercial district zoned, three-point-six-two-acre site. Parcel number zero-eight dash one-seven point zero dash one-zero-zero dash zero-five-two, Ward Three. The Planning and Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications?
And you guys are okay if I read these as a group?
Yes, please.
Yoga on the Square, six-twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, Go Yoga Express LLC, request additional city services to their yoga on the square, Saturday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Additional city services requested, trash toters and electric. All events approved by council must follow COVID-nineteen mitigation as required by the state of Illinois at time of event. Venue on Main, all events, request from Venue on Main to allow mobile commerce vendors for all special events at Venue on Main, Special Services District. Twelve C, West End Indy Market, seven-twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, and nine-eleven, twenty twenty-one. Request from Sweet Honey LLC to host the West Indy Market on Saturday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, twelve P.M. to six P.M. on Saturday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, ten A.M. to four P.M. City Parking, Tenth and West Main Street, lot closure request July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, nine A.M. to eight P.M. on September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, eight A.M. to five P.M. Additional city services requested, trash toters, barricades, and no parking signage. All events approved by council must follow COVID-nineteen mitigation as required by the state of Illinois at time of event. Labor Day Parade, nine-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Request from the Southwestern Illinois Central Labor Council to host the Labor Day Parade Monday, September sixth, twenty twenty-one, ten A.M. to ten-thirty A.M. Street closure request, parade lineup, eight A.M. to eleven A.M., South First Street from West Washington, South Side to West Monroe, North Side, South First Street from West Monroe, South Side to West Adams Street, North Side, and South Second Street from West Washington, South Side to West Monroe, North Side, including cross streets. Parade route rolling closure, ten A.M. to eleven-thirty A.M. Additional city services requested, no parking signage, barricades, cleanup of parade route, police and street department personnel. All events approved by council must follow COVID-nineteen mitigation as required by the state of Illinois at time of, of event. Labor Day Picnic, nine-sixth, twenty twenty-one, request, request from the Southwestern Illinois Central Labor, Labor Council to host the Labor Day Picnic Monday, September sixth, twenty twenty-one, ten A.M. to four P.M. At Huff Park, city services requested, picnic tables, water, electric, no dogs, signage, trash toters, and police personnel. All events approved by council must follow COVID-nineteen mitigation as required by the state of Illinois at time of event.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Duco?
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please. Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries. On resolutions, I need a motion to read the resolution thirty-four fourteen by the title only.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please. Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, resolution three-four-one-four dash twenty twenty-one. Jenny, will you please read?
Resolution thirty-four fourteen, twenty twenty-one, a resolution requesting permission from IDOC to close Route one-fifty-nine for the Labor Day Parade, Monday, September sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion?
Steele?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will have roll call. Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Motion carries. On fifteen ordinances, motion to be read by title only and as a group. Ordinances eight-nine-five-one and eight-nine-five-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Jenny, would you like to read?
Ordinance eighty-nine fifty-one, twenty twenty-one, a zoning ordinance regarding thirty-one, May twenty-one, Ricardo Tucker, Tucker Quality Homes LLC. Ordinance eighty-nine fifty-two, twenty twenty-one, a zoning ordinance in regards to thirty-two, May twenty-one, Jerry and Debbie Belleville.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Any discussion?
I didn't see who said, I didn't hear anybody say second.
That's all right.
Duco, I'm sorry.
Any second? I mean, excuse me, any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, hearing no discussion. Roll call, please. Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under unfinished business, a discussion of resolution thirty-four thirteen as it relates to restore Illinois guidelines and mitigation.
Garrett, I think they were asking for you to explain. For phase five.
As you recall, there's been over the course of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, a series of resolutions that the council has approved to offer, uh, local measures to assist businesses during, uh, the COVID pandemic. Predominantly, what it was, was the ability for, uh, street closures near some restaurants, and they could utilize those for outdoor dining. And also, uh, some of their parking lots were, were able to be used for outdoor dining. There was also a provision where the mayor, as liquor commissioner, could allow, uh, outdoor service that wouldn't normally otherwise be allowed of alcoholic beverages to assist in this measure. Again, if you recall, that the, uh, resolutions were tied to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And most recently, the resolution provide, uh, most recent resolution provided that it would expire by, uh, a specific date or the, uh, when the state reached phase five, where it was fully open, and then it would automatically expire. Well, now, we anticipate, based upon the governor's offices, most recent representations, that that will happen on Friday. So, that resolution and the local measures associated with it to mitigate the COVID pandemic will, will cease. There have been some comments or desires to see what if, what if anything, uh, could continue to that extent. But, uh, in order to do that, for instance, if you wanted to continue, uh, street closure for some reason, that would have to go through traffic committee, and you have to make a decision based on that. But it wouldn't, because obviously, it wouldn't be COVID-nineteen pandemic-related, because they're able to have full capacity in the restaurants and bars and the businesses that were, we were assisting with these local measures. And the same holds true with the, uh, with the parking lots and the use of those. So those uses, those local measures that were instituted were specialty measures that were designed to address a pandemic that thankfully, uh, will no longer have state restrictions associated with it, as anticipated as of Friday. So if there were going to be any, uh, attempts to continue, uh, some are all those measures that would require modifications to your ordinances and have to go through the appropriate committees, uh, including ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Alderman Wiggington?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my questions really have to do with, as it relates to High Street, Jackson, uh, Church Street, et cetera, tents that went up at, uh, many of our neighborhood bars, that sort of thing. Does all that then have to be removed on Friday, the eleventh?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Jason, I guess this question's going to be for you. Jersey barriers going to, maybe removed, streets going to be opened up on Friday?
Friday, that's the intention, unless someone told me otherwise.
Thank you.
Phil?
So, uh, parking lot, uh, and I'm talking about off-parking that they own, it's their private property. We can dictate whether or not they can put a tent out there.
No, they had, they had to get a, uh, a permit from the city in order to do that under this resolution.
And it expires, correct?
It does. And then they, they were going to be duly notified, I believe, tomorrow, if it was contemplated.
Because now, if they put a tent even on their own parking lot, that's a special event permit.
That's correct.
And that can be done three times a year?
A special event liquor license can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more?
Uh, that's what I was going to ask. If they're, thank you, you're Ms. Mayor. That's what I was going to ask, because, uh, Ward Six has a lot of restaurants in it, and they do request sometimes to have tents or close off on certain holidays. So I was just wondering if they're able to do that.
So that's not going to change Alderman Steele. Well, it'll still be like we do now with communications. They submit an application, staff reviews it, and then they'll be notified that, we'll bring it to council. And in that, they will also be notified that they have to apply for a special use license for their liquor.
Okay, I think we'll just tell them.
Yeah, that doesn't change, that process is not going to change for them, if they have a special.
Have we notified the businesses impacted with the street changes? Have we notified them?
They will be notified in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dennis, Mr. Wagon?
Yes, I have a question. I know, uh, in the past, I know a lot of places uptown got, or they got a closure at least five to six, seven times. You know, street closed, or parties and that, and you're only allowed three?
No, three is a special event liquor license. There are some that, uh, that's, that's something, a separate request. The special event liquor license, you have to go to the mayor's liquor commissioner locally,
and the liquor control commission is pretty good to get licensed for that. Uh, you know, some of these, uh, places are already licensed through their normal, uh, license to have some outdoor service, but not, not within the streets.
Okay, well, I just, then one other question is, so it's different, you know, if they want to close, you know, and have a special event, you know, they can do that.
With the, with the approval of the council.
But, um, and they're limited to three, but if they go with that, who, who's paying, who's paying the bill to close these streets down and put the trash containers down?
Well, we handle that during the normal course of business. So if we, we drop barricades off, we'll deliver toters, but we do that on our normal course of business hours. We're not doing that on a Saturday or Sunday. So usually Public Works will deliver like on a Friday, and then I tell them, we will specifically pick it up Monday.
Okay, what's, what's that costing us as a, uh, taxpayers, as a city of level? Send, what, send two guys out, truck?
I would have never honestly investigated because it's just a normal part of our business.
You know, how many hours are they there?
How long, how long are they there?
Yeah.
I mean, if they're dropping barricades, half hour? Not even, maybe?
If they're dropping four barricades at each location, that's probably three minutes each, five, five minutes.
But the customer puts them up.
Correct. They're just dropping them. They're just dropping them.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if our guys have to put them up, which are the type three, no.
Type-three barricade.
Type-three barricades, they do pay for that.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Alderman Steele?
Uh, yes, I have one more, uh, question. When the LGBTQ people were here, they said October second, and that is the all-high school reunion, uh, that we approved last meeting, I think, in front of Tavern on Main. Have we approved that yet?
No, we have never approved any since for that.
That's Joe English is doing the sixties and seventies.
Yeah, I have not received any communication on that.
Okay, I better, somebody better tell him to do that.
Yeah, because our dates are filling up fast and we will start denying events because we won't have the ability.
Right.
Especially not.
Yeah, okay.
Any more discussion or questions? Okay. Under miscellaneous and new business?
Mayor, can I bring up something under miscellaneous?
Yeah.
Uh, if, if you and the council would allow me to read this email I got from Forty-two oh four West Main, uh, Brewing Company. We received a phone call today from the police chief about Harvest Host, an RV program we joined. RVs, when traveling across the country, will stay overnight at a local farm, winery, or brewery. It's been a great experience for us, people from all over the United States have been stopping in our beautiful town and parking at Forty-two oh four. These RVs are completely self-contained, unlike tents, and we set a limit on how many we accept. The police chief said we must stop hosting the RVs after this weekend because it's a bel, against belleville ordinance. No camping within the city. We're asking for an exemption. Can you help? I asked her a bunch of questions, and I'm going to skip some of this, I'm going to go down. Uh, they travel and they park there overnight. Um, and I know I talked to the mayor and she talked to the mayor. I think there is value in this program. It really brings people from all around the country. Today I spoke with someone from Chicago, someone from New York, and from Colorado. I have to limit how many people can come due to parking room. The potential tourism would be good for belleville, too. Other businesses can do it, too. The program is called Harvest Host. As the council knows, quite a few years ago, we pounded out an ordinance for food trucks because they were parking everywhere. And, uh, they, they're only allowed on private property, not public property. Um, and there's a fine line in here, uh, being in a self-contained RV as opposed to being in a tent. Uh, and we know that our restaurants are hanging on by a thread. We know the city needs revenue. We need tourism revenue. We need, need more people coming through the city. Uh, it's not like they've got fifteen out there. They might have, I don't know, uh, one, two, three, I, I really don't know. This is the first time I heard about this when I, when I got the email. Uh, I think it would behoove us to bring this to ordinance and legal. Uh, maybe, uh, the, the city attorney and you should look into this. We should bring this to, uh, um, uh, ordinance illegal. This is on private property. They're not camping outside. They're totally contained. They stay there overnight and they leave in the morning. And if it's, and I am pro-business, and we have got to keep these restaurants afloat. I think this is a cool program. I think Forty-two oh four thought out of the box. And I'm just bringing this up to the council for their, to think about, their consideration. But I, if you would be so kind to sit down with our city attorney, uh, we can't do it tomorrow because we've already got the agenda set for ordinance illegal. But, uh, I would like some guidelines on this, and I would like to bring this to ordinance and legal, uh, next month for discussion.
And by the way, Roger, or Alderman Wigginton?
That's okay.
We actually started today, as soon as we got in this morning, reviewing with what other communities may be involved with this.
Great.
So that is going to be my suggestion. I, I briefly mentioned it this morning to Garrett, and that was going to be the suggestion that we discuss it in the next, uh, not this week because of the.
Right, it's, it's, it's interesting concept. And, you know, we're looking at tomorrow night, we've got eight items on O-N-L, and I know we're reviewing and looking at a lot of things. And I think as a lot of these things can come up, we need to discuss them, tweak them. Um, and I think, uh, a, as you know, a lot of the council knows, a lot of our ordinances, uh, even though we, we have gone through the books, still need, because there's always special things that pop up that don't fit under that particular, particular category. And it's a mobile society, the society's changing, culture's changing. We've got to bring revenue back to this town, and we have to have these businesses have a chance to try to recoup a tremendous amount of lost revenue. So number one, thanks for bringing that up this morning, and, um, I would like to have further discussion on this.
Okay. Thank you so much. I will tell you that I, this is an ordinance legal, uh, situation, but as I spoke with you before, we do have a book this big.
Oh, I know.
Which I was going to sit on before they got me the new chair.
I was wondering how you got so high.
But anyway, I, I did, and I have discussed, uh, with Alderman Wigginton about reviewing the ordinances and taking sections by section.
Thank you.
And going through and seeing what does not need to be on the, the books anymore, and then suggestions about what does need to be on the books.
Perfect example, showed you how long I've been looked in my closet. But, you know, I don't even know how far these go back, but these are all supplements. So I mean, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And, uh, we also would use some of the people for Art on the Square, the artists, they had their campers, their RVs that parked.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, they did.
Well, that's interesting.
They always have to because we relating needs and.
Yeah.
But if we let them.
I was going to say, I was going to piggyback off that. We have no hotels right now.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
This is a great opportunity for our city to kind of do something innovative or other.
Aren't these motels on wheels, anyway?
Yeah.
And we have no motels, thank you.
Right.
Anything else under ordinances or miscellaneous and new business?
New business?
Yes.
I was looking over the situation for street and grades, and it's been difficult for us these past couple of years. And I came up with a, with a set of plans, and I want to go ahead and basically, uh, set it up for consideration. And basically, starting out on the plans for engineering, design, and construction work, you have to go ahead and look at the engineering firm awarded for design, the contract amount for the engineering firm awarded for design, the change orders made by the engineering firm, cost overruns for design engineering firm, the final cost paid to the engineering firm awarded for design, and the construction company awarded project. Approved bit of amount, approved bit amount to the construction company. And then we look at the change orders for the construction made by the construction company and the cost overruns for the construction company. And then finally, we come up with a final cost paid to the construction company, and then the total cost of the project. Because this is how we arrive at before you get to the quality-based selection. We never knew how to deal with the QBS. It's all new to us, but if we follow something like this, and the final thing is, look at the fund used for payment. If you follow the straight, narrow guidelines like I pointed out, it'll be so much easier when we come to meeting and this is all spelled out.
Okay, Garrett, would you like to speak to that?
I think the, the appropriate way to consider that suggestion is to refer to ordinance and legal. It's, there's not an action item on the agenda.
Right.
For that. Actually, I think that's something that you could take care of with, uh, the discussion tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, it's on the agenda, yeah.
We have a consideration item on the ordinance and legal review period related to the adoption of the professional services selection act standards under our law.
And I do believe with our streets and grades, we're also going to have the opportunity with the changing of the time of the meeting and not before, an hour before we have the city council meeting, that there will also be an opportunity there to review, then all the aldermen will be able to review contracts, uh, questions that they have before any vote is taken. So there will be time in between. Okay. About anything else under miscellaneous and new business? If not, let's go to seventeen A, motor fuel claims in the amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's have a roll call.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wigginton. Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Motion carries. We do not have anything for executive session. Okay.
Oh, we do?
Yes, okay.
It's going to be brief.
Okay.
So we will go into a brief executive session.
Well, nobody, he's going to call in, right? Yeah, okay.
It'll be brief, I just like to.
Okay.
I'll let, I'll let it go to the wire. Do you need a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to go to executive session?
Second.
Wagon.
Aye.
Wigginton. Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Okay, you ready? Okay. Uh, since we had, um, nothing coming as far as just information on our executive session, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those, roll call.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.